One. Public comment and you didn't have one. If you're here. Uh. Bethany.
Thank you for being patient.
Yes, since you have been.
She won't hear me over here.
You'll have three, three minutes and we can't. We can ask questions, questions, but we can't really, unfortunately.
My name is. Uh, Bethany Bauer, four eighteen, Hotel Potra. Uh, mine's about uh, noise ordinance. We've been having issues with our neighbors. I sent a video, but I have like numerous videos of them. They party all weekend, like twenty, thirty people, and then it's like all day like loud where it came here in our house. On our porch and go back there because it's just loud. They turned the radio up and it's all day and all night. And I've called the sheriff, but they don't do anything in the area because we're a city. But we're not, we don't have, they said they have to go to the city to complain and then the sheriff doesn't care, so. That's where I'm at. I just, I'm just trying to figure out. What we can do, because I don't, I, when I moved here that, they built a party house that has now an added porch to it too. So now they just party in there all day long. And now that party thing is bigger than their single white mobile home. So if that was there, I would never have bought this property two years ago. Because it's just going to, it's a trash all along. They leave trash and then as, as you know, it's windy here, so all that trash just flows in our yard because they don't pick it up. I have video of the trash all over from last night's party. So that'll all be in my yard. I have to pick it up and then that's my fun.
Uh, where is your setup?
Um, right beginning, like when you go up by Gaswell. Um, the they're the.
You talking about Roger, Roger Brown from the uh, Port Rock?
Uh, pretty much, yeah, it's four twenty-six.
Kind of.
Yeah, a horse and a pony. Yeah.
That, that.
That's, yeah, it's like they built this Taj Mahal. I don't know what it is. And they, now they added a porch to it and they have all this. It was a shock.
Okay, and I'm, I'm gonna interrupt and say it's public comment and you can refer somebody at public comment to your staff.
Robin, I think he's asking questions.
I'm asking questions.
Right, but.
We're trying to understand where the house is. I was up there two weekends ago and I think I know what she's talking about and I want to understand what she's saying, Robin.
Okay. Um, you're just, public comment's supposed to be a, a monologue, not a dialogue. Okay.
So when you pull it back a left on his side.
Yeah.
Down on the right hand side.
We're, we have a maroon, it's not my house.
I, I know where.
And we just built a trailer thing to get um cover for our trailer, our storage trailer, like a big storage metal building.
Yeah.
But not close for our trailer, our camping trailer, so. We got a permit for.
Please get with Josh.
You, you left book with your contact information.
It's my contact info. We can please speak with Joshua and Ray off to get your contact.
Yeah, I've been, I mean, I've been going through this a broken year. I don't know what to do.
Bethany, just don't worry, it's okay, we'll get you.
We'll take care of it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, and thank you, but I did get those.
Yes, thank you.
The other? We're, we're handing out. With that, we're moving to consent agenda. All matters as consent agenda or consent to be routine by the city council and enacted by one motion and item can be removed from this consent agenda by the city administrator, mayor, or any member of the city council and will be considered after approval for the consent agenda.
Mayor, we would like to remove consent agenda item A, the approval of the October financial report. Obviously, you don't have it in front of you. We're still having some challenges with the software and the new budget, but we hope to have it for you at the next council meeting. Okay, ask for your patience and remove uh, item four A from the consent agenda.
Just have the minutes.
Yes.
Of October seventeen twenty-two. Should we do that? I make a motion that we uh approve consent agenda item B. Through the city council meeting. Second.
That's second.
Close the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Does close? That's a significant.
This is favorite thing to do is uh, prove the consent agenda.
He knows.
He loves that.
Right, you know, that, that's, that's old business, so just knock it out. Uh, there you go. We're moving to do this. So all matters, this is, new business will be discussed and considered separate. Receive consent and act on a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a professional service agreement with M H W group, B C to Kentucky, conduct the annual audit for the fiscal year ending twenty, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, mayor, I'll take this one. So back on October the eighteenth of twenty twenty-one, the council approved a P S A, a professional service agreement with Mr. William C. Score as well as the M W H group to conduct the annual audit for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So not the one that just closed out this September, this is the twenty-two year that just goes out, but it's the one that closed out last September in twenty twenty-one. And that's what the agreement was for, for, for them to do it. Now, the agreement maintained that Mr. Score would prepare the balance sheets that are needed to be reviewed by an audit, and then he would provide them to the M W H group to actually conduct the audit. In prior years, Mrs. Score has been our auditor for the city and he's been able to provide, to prepare the balance sheets and also do the audit. There was a change in uh, regulations as to if you had one C P A prepare the balance sheets, you have to have a separate now C P A actually conduct the audit of the balance sheets. That's, that's the new change, that's the new law. He is a one man shop, one C P A firm, so that's why he came to the council back in twenty-one and said, I can prepare the balance sheets, I just can't do the audit, and recommended that we contract with this other group out of Wichita Falls, which apparently he's done business with before, and the council approved that. And in fact, typically that what happens is right around this time is when you can, you, you contract with an auditor to come in and start doing the review of the, of the paperwork during the holiday season and get it ready so that come January, February of next year, they actually are coming before the council to reveal the findings of their audit, and then the council will hopefully approve the audit at that time. When I started here in April, one of the first things I was asking for is where's the fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit, because surely it's been done by April, unfortunately it has not. And in fact, in talking to the city secretary, the auditor had not even shown up to finish the rest of the preparing of the balance sheet. So we got on the horn and I think it was around June that he finally came to the city hall. Mr. Score came to city hall to review all our financial paperwork that uh, the city secretary had for him for fiscal year two thousand and one.
Twenty-one.
Right, twenty-one, because he hadn't finished the balance sheets. And he was here maybe a total of about four days. Reviewing everything, said he had everything he needed, left, and told me that he would have it completed for the July, uh, July council meeting. And as we got close to July, I reached out to him, they were not able to get it done, so we'd be looking at August. Then I reached out to him when we were getting close to August, and then I was not able to hear from him anymore. So I'm had, been having trouble getting in contact with him. He's not responding to my phone calls or my emails or the city secretary's phone calls or emails. So I reached out to the M W H group, which is supposed to be actually be doing the audit to find out if they at least received the balance sheets and figuring out when are they gonna have the audit ready to bring to council. And I finally got a little somebody there, they said that they had been talking to Mr. Score because apparently he's got other cities he's doing audits for and doing the same thing, where he's preparing the balance sheets, giving it to them for review, but that he's been running way behind and they did not have our balance sheets as of yet. And so I asked them next time to talk to Mr. Score if they would please, someone would reach out to me or at least give them a status update as to when he was gonna have the balance sheets for them to be able to conduct the audit. And they said they would, and they had not gotten them as of yet, as of last week when I reached out, or two weeks ago, when I reached out to them again, they said they had not heard from him either. So, so unfortunately, it does not look like we're gonna have our fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit anytime soon, which worries me because that should have already been done, and that needs to be done before we can even actually do the fiscal year twenty-two audit, because you have to go back to see how you close out the year in twenty-one. So I'm still gonna continue to work on trying to get Mr. Score to get the balance sheets to M W H, so they can go ahead and do the actual audit. In the meantime, I reached out to another auditor here locally over in uh, Denton County that I've used in the past to do city audits, and unfortunately he's, does not have the capacity to take on any new clients, nor can he recommend anybody to me that is here locally that had the capacity to take on new clients. But I did reach out to M W H group in Wichita Falls and they submitted the engagement letter that you have in your packet, and they're recommending that, or their, their proposal entails if they are going to do the audit for us, it's going to be anywhere from nine thousand five hundred to, not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred, to cover all costs, travel costs, copies, postage processing, et cetera.
This is twenty-one and twenty-two or?
This is just twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yes.
Okay.
For twenty-one, if you go back and you look, we apparently, they agreed, I, I'm guessing that's a favor to Mr. Score, to conduct the twenty twenty-one audit for two thousand five hundred dollars. But they're doing the twenty-one when they finally get the balance sheet, so.
We tried Mr. Score for twenty-five hundred bucks?
No, we cannot.
Well, we already paid.
Because we've already signed this agreement with M W H that they're, we're gonna pay them two thousand five hundred for them doing the twenty twenty-one audit. They just haven't gotten the materials, the audit yet.
No, but we've paid Mr. Score in full?
I believe yes, that we've paid Mr. Score in full to do the balance.
Of the last fiscal year. He had one month left as he came, did the deep dive audit and all of that, and that was in an office. He had it in September eleventh. And that's what he came in, in June, and was supposed to get us the sheets every gram to move forward. We just have not heard from him, and it's not just our city, we have other cities.
That's a good job.
Well, he's, he's currently retiring and this is one of the reasons why he's wanting to bring on others to do the work, but uh, I was at the understanding that he was gonna finish out twenty-one, and he even expressed to me an interest in, in helping us with twenty-two, but uh, I said with the the problem we're having with him, I'm kind of spinning him out of the loop in my recommendation to council and saying, we need an auditor because that's required.
Can we contact Michelle?
No, because she's not a C P A. So um, I, I, I think this M W H group will do a good job for us. Um, of course, I don't have really anything to base it, other than I've not heard any negative comments from anybody uh, about this group. Um, but we're gonna need to contract with an auditor because again, this is the time of year that they need to start coming in and reviewing our financial documents, start preparing the balance sheets so that they can actually start doing the audit and have it ready for a January, February timeframe. In our case, so again, uh, they're supposed to be doing our twenty-one audit as soon as they get the balance sheets, and I'm having them help me get in contact with Mr. Score to get the balance sheet so they can finish out the twenty-one audit and we can bring that to you as soon as possible. So, but we may have a delay in getting the twenty twenty-two audit in front of you because of the fact that we're still gonna be waiting on getting the twenty twenty-one audit done in front of you for you all to consider passing, and then we can start the twenty twenty-two.
So we gotta do the twenty-one to get the twenty-two done?
Yes. Now, we've, there's other things we can do in the meantime to start preparing the twenty-two, but at some point, you're gonna need the numbers from the twenty-one audit to finish out the twenty-two.
But we only have seven thousand dollar budget for an audit.
Right, so we put seven thousand dollars in there, it's in the city administrator's budget. So if we end up contracting with them and they end up going to the maximum, their eleven thousand five hundred, we have the capacity in my budget. We'll have some savings here and there that I'll make sure that we are able to recover that so that we don't.
And we signed a material contract that uh, some started, seven percent discount, five hundred something.
I'm happy to see if they're.
And this call, no rush, right? We're trying to get it.
Right, no, we're, we're, we're in no rush, yeah, because we're still waiting for the twenty-one uh, to, to be done, but I can reach out to them and see if they want to contract with us for more than one year and see if we get some sort of uh, discount for that.
I'll ask them to do from over here.
I do. Does he?
I'm asking to do more than one year.
Oh, more than one year at a time?
Yes. See, see how the life of our business within. Uh, maybe you can reach out to them and see if they can work with the balance sheet he did up to that point.
They haven't done anything, mayor.
Uh, do we, when we have that balance sheet for it, that he did for the deep dive audit, did he do that here?
I don't know. He presented something up in, so he presented from October through August and on, instead of council meeting in August, and he just had September left to do. He had to whenever he did the deep dive audit, but he didn't, or I don't know that I have. I don't know that I have that that was, he was not dealing with.
We say if we had it, see what they would charge us to do that one month and get twenty twenty-one backed up.
Let, let me see what they have, but I doubt that the, that when he presented to you guys is not the balance sheet. But we'll take a look at it.
Who'd you guys use in Dallas? Anybody?
We used uh, Carl Deaton with uh Hawken, Hawkins, Deaton, something, something and Say. Then.
Any relationship?
To.
And do you have a relationship with, a working relationship with?
Called Deaton?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, I do, and I said I already called.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
I reached down.
They're locked down.
Yeah, Paul said he'd be happy to help, but he doesn't, can't take on any new clients because he's so swamped. He's been turning down work. And I said, that's fine. Who in the area can you recommend to me? He says, nobody, because we're all swamped. I said, okay, well, thank you very much. So and this firm is out of Wichita Falls.
Do we have to pay the travel expense? That's, that's just.
That's part of it, yeah. We'll have to pay travel expense because they're gonna have to come down here and obviously stay in a hotel while they're because they really need about a good three to four days solid being here reviewing, being able, because all, all kinds of questions will come up that they'll be asking, in this case, our city secretary, because she's the one that has, takes care of the, what's the name of our software?
C S A.
C S A, and sometimes you'll have to generate some paperwork, receipts or what have you that they, they just start what Bill did for us, only this time, instead of having him do that, we can just contract with this company and do that and the audit, all in one package, like I'm used to doing Carl. And, and that way we have just that one firm.
They just, they get more information.
And we have no choice but to.
I think the, the mayor wanted to ask you about.
Right, to see if they could help with the twenty twenty-one.
I guess this really matters, that you still have the same conversation.
Yeah, twenty-one is already under contract, I don't even know what's gonna cost us, we just need to get the balance sheets due, so. Twenty-one, we're just gonna continue to work on trying to get that done. The conversation is for fiscal year twenty-two that we're having tonight is I would like to get somebody contracted so they, they can start getting a timeline for us to start working on fiscal year twenty-two, and my hope will be if I can, if we contract with these folks for twenty-two, that we're gonna put the pressure on Chris and Score because they know they need to finish up twenty-one before they can even start to finish up twenty-two.
Pretty much, I have to go with who's available right now. If this contact are busy, I'm gonna gotta go out of Wichita Falls. I, I don't know when.
What, are they Mr. Cavell? How was that?
He did.
I'm going to approve the resolution authorizing city administrator to execute professional service agreement with M H W group, B C to conduct the annual audit for the twenty twenty-two fiscal year ending. I'm saying.
Close the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Does close? New business B. Receive consent and act on authorization purchase of a crack seal trailer through Sourcewell.
Thank you, mayor.
All right.
I'll take this uh, as well. Uh, if you recall at the, we had this discussion at the last week, uh, October the seventeenth, where staff was directed by council to look into some other crack sealed trailers uh, and determine if we could do an apples-to-apples comparison and see if in fact we could find us a trailer that would meet our needs uh, as well as maybe do it for a uh, more cost-effective or cheaper amount than what we were getting from the cooperative known as Sourcewell. I did email the council via separate email, I believe this one was last week or week before last, uh, and it's also attached to your backup that shows the spreadsheet that uh, our um, operations manager, Joshua Barnwell, did for us in comparing uh, the top uh, one is the Crapco SS sixty is the one that we had recommended under Sourcewell. And then the other four are, are what he looked at. So we broke it down into the various components, determined if it was a cost, if it was even available, and we laid out the uh, spreadsheet there for you, including whether or not it had a local dealership, uh, training was provided, the warranty, uh, and what type of system, in this case, was it a bucket or was it a pump? Uh, so other than that, uh, if there are any questions, that is still recommended, by the way, go with the Sourcewell uh, crack seal trailer.
The repair of the Crapco is done by who?
By Crapco. They have a little, a little outfit here, and depending on the situation, they can either come onsite or we can take it to them and have a repair.
I told them and I thought they told me that they hired that house uh, locally, that, you know, they are in Arizona or wherever. Um, and my conversations of several people brought out that the sixty gallon was small, um, and that the average is the, the one twenty. So that you don't have to keep reloading it. Have you given consideration to that?
The idea that especially right now, the department with the staff we have right now, that we would be able to sustainably do enough in a given day to even satisfy the sixty gallons is gonna be a big stretch, let alone do one hundred and twenty gallons. Uh, as an example, at current, the city of Highland Village has been since twenty fifteen using the Super Shot sixty. They are larger than we are and they have a nine person staff, and they're only replacing that unit to go to the one twenty this upcoming year. So it is satisfied their needs, where their current road volume is greater than ours, where staff volume is certainly greater than ours. We are looking at the bare minimum amount of people that we need to successfully operate that machine, and with the sixty gallon unit.
Be less material waste?
Well, it, it certainly does material waste, and the, the, if I, if, if in the event that we did happen to use all sixty gallons that are in there, the, the heat ratio time that it takes to reheat an additional cube or two to get me another twenty or thirty gallons is twenty-five minutes, so it's a fairly negligible time period. If we stop for lunch and we use half, I could add more to it and go through. Uh, is it the only company that does make that size? They are, but I also am, I don't believe that that is best starter system for a city of our size. This is trucking around one hundred and twenty gallons and again, potentially having waste, because there is gonna be a little bit of a learning curve, because I'm the only person that has any experience with a pump driven machine.
What's the difference between the eighty-two thousand dollar one and a forty-one thousand one?
For sure.
Forty-one thousand.
Well. Okay. I didn't memorize this, so I apologize.
No, I'm, I'm sassy, I'm sassy.
Okay, so yeah, that was the Seal Master. That is a very, very good unit. It's a, it's a good solid customer, but I mean, for starters, obviously it's got more than double the capacity.
Right.
But um, really that's the biggest difference between the two is the double the capacity. There, the other is pretty much par for the course across the board. And yeah, they give me a lockbox for free, that's, you know, two hundred dollar deal, they give me overnight eating.
Give you your mark down.
But.
Does the N A mean these accessories are not available?
That's correct. Yes.
Well, he did his work. We asked him to do his work.
This is stuff that's not available on the internet. I had to call, speak to reps, talk to them, find this stuff out.
Ask them, why don't you?
Yeah.
Do all that stuff. So what are we on the door on this unit cost of the Crapco? Changing. Is this that forty-seven thousand dollar number?
Yes, yes, it's the uh, forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-four cents.
With the options, yeah.
The two fifty gallon part would definitely make sense. But I mean, that's Dallas size. Seal map, that's, there's a one ten on there, but that's got no options.
Yeah.
That saves you eleven thousand dollars for digging, I mean. You can get pushed in around those.
No, I'll let you. You say in the conversion, game or rework, if it's like it's a first. Yeah.
But you understand the concern, right, from last meeting?
Absolutely.
We find numbers of fourteen thousand and twenty-four thousand and even eighty-two thousand.
No, I mean, it's, it's. It was informative for me. I can't say that it was, it was a complete loss for me. I was, you know, I'll get down there to see what's out there, what they're offering. I'm not incapable.
I'm going to approve the authorizing of the purchase of a Super Shot sixty Delta crack seal trailer from Sourcewell.
One second. I shag it. Close the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Does close? C, receiving center and act on authorization purchase of the K M eight thousand T hot box trailer through Sourcewell.
Thank you, mayor, I'll take this one as well. So again, same discussion, we had this October the seventeenth. Uh, council asked staff to go back and do an apples-to-apples comparison of other hot box trailers. Uh, if you look at the very last page of your backup, you'll see the spreadsheet that uh, Joshua put together. Uh, this was actually emailed out to you all last week. Um, so if you look at the comparisons again that we put on the comparison, you'll see different uh, costs and whether or not they provide that component, and we as a staff are still recommending the K M eight hundred C E D out of Sourcewell.
I sent you that spreadsheet this week. You have a chance to go through it, make sure you know that members didn't have anything like that?
Yes.
They don't, they don't.
They don't.
Fair enough. You still recommending the what, the K M eight hundred Ted?
Yes, yeah.
Damn freight charges there. Should be something like that.
That fish can ride your mail like a fish.
That might trash me.
And the exciting part is if we don't, if the decision weren't made within a reasonable period of time, they're all fixed to have yet another price increase. That's.
I should know.
That's.
Did you get conjunction in conjunction with the crack sealer or is it something different?
No, it's completely different. So the crack seal machine is literally purely that, it is nothing but applying the crack seal to the cracks.
Right.
This hot box, it does both the tack, which is the application of option that we use to adhere the asphalt to it, and it also does the asphalt as far as here's where I'm applying. Technically, they all probably reclaim the, the old asphalt there and make it viable again, okay, that they're lying to you. That's not gonna happen. But this can be both distribution box, meaning let's pretend we all want to move out in a cold mix again, because that was so successful. It could distribute the cold mix, but its purest intent obviously is to drive to one of the two asphalt plants, take the hot asphalt, drop it into that hot box, keep it hot for about forty-eight hours, and then when we get out there, we draw up a chute and it hydraulically brings out asphalt, distributes it into the holes, and we shut it and we go. But at the same time, what this one offers that maybe some of the others did, is it has the basically glorified pump sprayer, thirty gallon tank, the holes to keep tack warm with a spray wand. Whereas right now, we're applying it with a corn husk broom or a mop, dunking it into a tank and applying the tack and then putting that down.
Is that why you look like Deep Van Dyke, very popular? Is that why you would put deep man, deep in Mary Poppins?
Yes, that, that is very. Thank you for that. But this one wants to spray it on there, give it an even coat and then allow us to put the asphalt down. But more importantly, it allows us to move from hole to hole to hole without losing the viability of that asphalt. In the event, at the end of the day, we still have some asphalt left. We don't want it to go to waste. We kick it on overnight. The next day we start back up. It's still a viable product for the rest of that day.
So.
Yes, yes. Hydraulic, so if there's anything that needs to be repaired over, come from the back to the front, it lifts up, dumps back, allows us to clean it, et cetera.
So if you recall, Castle, maybe it's been a month or more now, on one of the Friday memos I sent to you, I sent you photos where they took some hills on hilltop. They cut out, saw cut out five potholes. Get to go out, get the hot makes and bring it over and then keep it rolling on. And it took them two full days to just fill five potholes. Because what we have right now is very inefficient. You don't have the equipment.
Yeah.
This trailer is going to, as I just mentioned, is going to be easier to operate for that two man crew that we do have. And they'll be able to get those potholes done in a much or a faster fashion than the two days it took us right now just to do the five that we did up there at.
All of that efficiency as well, John. But we just, again, when you see numbers, that just maybe they didn't make sense at the time.
Completely.
You have to understand our position.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So hopefully you found this.
No.
Which you were asking us to do it. So we just wanted to make sure we got you all the information that you needed.
I'm going to approve the authorizing of the purchase of a KM eight thousand. Let's stick T in the name. Tanker, hot box trailer from Sourcewell.
I shag it. All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That's what you want.
Did you send us applications?
We have one. I have a letter that she said she wasn't, she has her council meeting.
She, what city is she or what?
Crown, the city of Crown.
You don't have to live in.
She lives in the city.
She just works.
Oh, she works for Crown. She can do that as an employee.
Yes.
Oh, you do the same thing. You do it just in the work here.
Yep.
Fire. Find a replacement. What's funny is tomorrow you're going to be like, huh, you're fired. Bye.
So next one will be received to be received, you can send an act on appointing members to the planning and zoning commission. Then, yes, sir. So we have, uh, two, uh, current commissioners that reached the end of their term. It was, uh, Mr. David Randolph and, uh, Mrs. Marissa Randolph. Uh, when we reached out to them and asked them if they wanted to be considered for reappointment, they both said, no, they, they did not. And so that's why we have a vacancy for place two and place four currently on the planning and zoning commission. We put out, uh, a, an application, a request for folks to apply. And you have as part of your package, the application that we received from, uh, Ms. Lisa Dawn Cabrera. She also wrote this letter and gave it to the secretary to give to you all because she cannot be here tonight. To give you a little more information as to why she's interested in serving on the planning and zoning commission. So even if you appoint her tonight, we're still down one planning and zoning commissioner. Um, as it stands right now, we're continuing to, uh, push the information out there that we're accepting applications for P and Z. And hopefully that we will get, um, more applications in so we can bring those to a future council meeting here for your consideration. If they have a standing question.
What's her address?
She lives on four seven. She approached me, um, a few months ago at one of my offices that I was at, where City Secretary asked me to reach out to her and there was an opening. She's not able to join council because our council meetings are held on the exact same day that council's held in Crown. There will be no other issues than the, her being on.
P and Z, their P and Z's are different. They're, so her council is different than our P and Z?
Well, their council's the same night. So she's meeting tonight for council as well.
So if we have a joint meeting, how do they hold it for them? If, if like, if it comes down to people are missing, how, how would we hold a joint meeting if?
Well, it depends. If we're going to hold a joint meetings, it may be on the P and Z night instead of a council night. Or it could be on a council night instead of P and Z. And we're just going to know that if it's on a council night, she's not going to be able to be here as a P and Z commissioner.
Can we reach out before we do those to make sure that we will have a corner of the council and with P and Z before those are scheduled?
Are there, are there stipulations in terms of attendance, same as ours? Like you can hold this, so many or can, like, how does that work?
You know what? Good question. I don't recall seeing. There, did you say you think there is?
No, I don't.
Yeah, right.
I. See, I don't see anything. I don't recall seeing anything, Councilman.
I'm sorry, what do you need?
Uh, have you come across anything that is a, a, a attendance requirement for appointed officials like P and Z?
I know there's one, I know that the city has one for council, but I'm not aware of one for P and Z, but they are. I haven't, one, I haven't looked and two, the council can certainly require one if they so choose, if they don't have one already. I mean, I'd be happy to research that.
Yeah, no, I'm sure I, I'm, I'm looking at it for now.
That'd be my concern, Mayor, is that she would be doubled up. Maybe on important. I mean.
But the work that they do is on the nights that she can attend. She just would be here to avoid her opinion during this meeting and would, she would already have done that. They meet on August, Monday.
Through P and Z.
Don't count, she's not on, she's the city secretary, so she has to attend all.
Counselor is the same?
Yes.
So to your point of every other country is that?
The P and Z meet.
On second.
Combined.
Got you. And there's combined meeting, if Mr. Brer joined, you make sure that they have the.
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay, there's nothing in your policy and before.
John, there's nothing in the ordinance either.
That just costs three hundred and fifty dollars.
I asked the questions. I asked the questions.
Come on.
Any questions, Mr. Charles?
I think he's a lovely lady. Years. So we do need, we need some, we need some experience. Do I, do I make a motion there? I would like to make a motion to approve Mrs. Lisa Dawn Cabrera to the planning and zoning commission.
Place, place, place four. Doesn't.
Place two. Place two.
Okay.
Place two. Feel like I was forced into the place that I chose, but.
Do I have a second? Second. Close, can I ever say aye?
Aye.
Close, both? Thank you. This time. We're going to move into the executive session. This rule is fire from now.
Oh, wow. I can't get the memo.
In the course of Texas Department of Section five five one point oh one. The city council may assess in the executive session, both meetings to discuss the following. Five five one point oh seven one. One constitution with the city attorney on a matter. Yes, okay. Matter in which the duty of the attorney to the, to the government body under the Texas display rule of professional conduct for the state of art. Texas law accomplished with the Texas Open Meeting Act, starting employment agreement of John Pedroski. B, five five one point oh seven four, to divert the appointment, employment evaluation and assessment duties. Dismiss or dismissal of a public officer or employee employment agreement with John Pedroski. It will leave at nine oh eight to executive session. Excellent. I'll try not to flub it up. Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome, sir.
First time I've been. Hopefully you wouldn't cross the.
Since there's nobody here, I'm going home.
And she said you can put tape over it?
Yeah.
She didn't have any, I asked. She's got to get some of them, she's like. I mean, you can tape all three of those.
Scotch tape.
You can put tape over like that. Just get a, hey, Josh.
Peter, Kate?
Literally take a stiffy now.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And so that I can keep it on?
Oh, no, it just keeps pretty good.
All right, now to the picture, but we can head up. Yeah, and the center with the, uh.
All that new town.
Lightning rush, and they said all the kids liked it. You know, they're coming all ready and discussing us. Well, it's not, not when we're stuck at work. No, maybe they're, you, you're outside. We are inside and we're. Oh, yeah, I need your book to swing the table.
This one?
Yep.
Okay.
It's going to collapse. And then grip this out a little bit. We're just going to swing it. Well, she has stuff with that.
I was going to say, we got to swing it this way.
Let's just leave it.
Okay.
I'll just leave it. As when I lived, she had it swung out this way. The doors are all connected.
Yeah, because you can get it here. That's not our fault. Oh, I got to bring this down or come back and we want to move the table up.
Yeah, they cleaned out too.
But the chairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow, look at that. It's ready for early voting next seven o'clock tomorrow.
Is that what time the polls open?
Yes, sir. Yes, they am.
So we are back from executive session at nine forty-six. I'm making motion. Oh, not yet, not yet, not yet.
We have one last thing to direct staff back to.
Yes, so. Do you have a copy of it? I'll dial them here if you don't.
Jimmy, turning this letter of resignation this morning. So, uh, says his rank, he sent this to me to inform me that he was resigning his position in place five on the.
Okay.
During the sitting council.
So, Mayor, I think you can ask that something be put on a future agenda, but I don't think you could get into the meat. Sorry.
All right. I'm directing staff to put on next meeting's agenda for an appointment to his replacement.
So we'll take and get the education's out there. With that, now, welcome. Make a motion with the prime. All the members say, ah, ah, those votes.
Has anyone ever said I make a motion to go home? I'm sure a lot of your meetings, you're like, this time.
Robin, thank you very much.
Good walk. Yes, oh, thank you.
Robin, we miss you. We want to see your face.
Harvey, good night.
Yeah. John, all of you are staying in our city.
I'll do my best.
Your honor.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um.